Before we start the meeting, I'd like to hold a moment of silence for the two four of you. We have Ryan Deasy, Chuck Sheehan, Seth Beckman, Lynn Conway, Patrick Sheehan, also Karen Duffy, and Andy Beattie. Is your motion approved?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
The one problem with the minutes I saw was that Chuck both made the motion and seconded the motion to approve the minutes in the last meeting. I don't think that's right.
I don't think that is right.
So, yeah, so we've got to fix that, but otherwise, they're good.
Good catch.
With that notation, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item 5D Administrator Review Items 5D-1, 2281ZONClavDLLC. David Eck. Zoning permit application for fencing in the garden play area and adjacent property line. Property located at 20 Old Stonington Road, Stonington. Assessors map 153 block 2, lot 4, zone GC60. With this zoning permit application for Mystic Dog Watch Restaurant, they are looking to replace the existing metal fence around the play area with a solid wooden fence for more privacy and also pave the area next to that, which is sort of an outdoor storage area currently behind a fence. It's also served as a garden area. It'll just be used for a storage of outdoor furniture. They're not going to add any restaurant seats or anything like that. They're also just adding a fence along the, what used to be the Christmas tree shop, to the east of the property. And when I say that area is going to be paved, it's just with Portland cement, not by Tuminas. Won't be a parking area or anything like that. So, very minor modifications, and Mr. Eck is here if there's any questions.
I have a question. Do you have any lighting? Is this purely storage?
Pardon?
Is it all storage?
No, we were hoping, well, originally, we were going to extend the play. Have you been over there? There's a play area on the side. So, the idea was to extend the play area a little bit, and then, on the other side of it, have a storage area for other stuff.
On the east side?
Yes.
And no lighting at all?
No. Just even though after last weekend, I'm not sure I want more kids playing in the play area, but, well, COVID, if you remember, the last two years, kids haven't been playing. This Friday, they were playing, so it was awkward. Almost back to normal.
I just have one. Are you thinking about extending your tree line along Route 1 right now? I think there's a break where that player...
It was. You know, I wasn't going to extend the tree line.
Okay.
I was just going to keep it fenced, you know, so people could see. Originally, you know, we have a metal fence there right now. It's only for football.
Yeah.
And we were thinking of a wooden fence, and then we've just decided to stick it with metal.
Okay.
Just from airflow, you know, things like that. We're thinking of doing something to cut the noise down on the road, but I don't know anything will cut the noise down sometimes.
Okay, okay. I was just wondering. I really liked that tree line. I think it was a great addition to the property, and I think it served the neighborhood well as well, so I thought it was great. I'm surprised you got those trees to live.
I just, I think this is more for Keith than the owner, and it appears that this is from looking, the picture that's in your report is, you're looking at it from the Route 1 side where the fence is going to be installed. I understand the reasoning for it, and I don't think it's a big deal, but has the fire department looked at this? And do they have any issues with not being able to get their equipment right in near the building and near the, I think, what's the barbecue area in the back, the wood burning stove area? They won't really be able, unless they crash through the fence. It inhibits their access a little bit, and sometimes they have issues with that.
The fence on the south side or the...
The south side, yeah.
Well, the south side's going to be the same fence that's there now. So, the same, it's just a four-foot-high metal, see-through fence.
I understand that.
But no, we haven't sent this to the fire department.
Okay. If you don't, if you see no need to do it, I have no other problems with it, but it just seems to me that they should have looked at this because even the existing fence is an issue, but I don't think it's a major one, so unless anybody else has a problem with it, I'm fine.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Chad Frost. Zoning permit application for the installation of play equipment, two structures, and three movable play features. Property located at 1 Harry Austin Drive Mystic. Assessors map 160 block 6, lot 14, zone RC120. Mr. Frost is their landscape architect here.
Are we good, Keith?
Yeah.
All right. Good evening. Chad Frost, Principal of Camp Frost Landscapes Architecture, here on behalf of the YAC. And tonight, we were here a few weeks ago to talk about the amphitheater, which has now been out to bid and hopefully starting construction very soon, and then tonight is hopefully a very simple, even simpler than the last one. It's five pieces of play equipment, three of which don't need permanently attached. This is part of a low ropes course, so the two pieces of equipment that do attach to the ground, the kids actually stay very close to the ground. Nobody's up on the leg or anything like that. And I think the real reason we're here tonight is really about height, as Keith had mentioned in his staff report. So, I'll go through the five pieces really quickly. The first piece is called the Nitro Crossing. That is the one that has a height of 30 feet, so it's two utility poles. There's a wire that spans in between them that's about 20 feet long. There's a rope that hangs in the middle, and the kids are supposed to figure out how to creatively get from one side to the other side, like the lava pit is in the middle. So, effectively, just a barge swing, and they have to work in a group to get from one side to the other side of that one. That's the one where there are two utility poles, as I mentioned, they're 30 feet high. Your height requirement is 25, and so we're here to really discuss, is two utility poles a structure? And if so, is it required to meet the building height? Because it's not really a building either. You can't occupy it, so that's really the primary reason we're here to talk tonight. The second structure is what they call the porthole, which is simply about an eight-foot by eight-foot, two-sided thing with a tire in the middle, and the other three obstacles are all not even attached to the ground. Try my image. One is simply two planks with a bunch of strings, and the kids have to work together to walk in it in a unified fashion. One is called the muse, which is a series of tinder blocks laid out on the ground, and they have three pieces of wood, and they have to collectively figure out how to get from one side to the other side as a group, moving the three pieces of wood. Again, nothing's permanently attached. And then the last, they call the whale's tail, I believe, which is basically like a group teeter totter. So, it's just kind of a deck that rocks back and forth and not permanently attached. As you'll see in the site plan, all five elements are in what we're calling the, basically the first base side, the right field side of what used to be the old baseball field, well out of view, off to the side, in an area that's currently maintained lawn, outside of the setbacks, outside of the non-acquisition zone of the RC120. So, that's kind of it in a nutshell, and it's really just about the height of those two utility poles, and if that's an issue.
The ball field is out of use now?
Correct. Ball field is out of use.
Why do the holes have to go up?
That's just, these are pre-manufactured pieces, right? And so, the company that makes them, this is how they make them. We can, you know, modify them if we really need to, but this is how it was designed to be that 30 feet up. They're a 35-foot pole, just, that's the standard utility pole, so it can get buried five feet in the ground, and then the swing can work from one side to the other.
So, if you cut the poles, the swing would still...
We'd have to modify the swing, you know.
You'd just have to shorten the rope?
Yeah, to shorten that, and the swing distance changes a little bit. The 30-foot works great because they know the pendulum height, they know where the kids can get from one side to the other. They don't have to change everything, but, so that's why we're here to ask the question is, obviously, every other utility pole in the town is over 30 feet, a 35-foot pole is about the shortest pole they put in now, so, you know, it's a utility pole with a wire across the top of it. The kids won't be up there. This is not a high ropes course, so they're not going up on the leg and traversing. There's no platforms, there's no structure. It's just how do we define a structure, and does it have to meet the height?
I was confused. The poles aren't for climbing, is it?
The poles are not for climbing. The staples and all that that are there are for the people that actually go up and set the rigging. It's not for, the kids will not be climbing out there. That's why, if you look at it, they start quite a ways off the ground. There's, it requires a ladder to get up to that rigging area. Yep. Great question, because that was my first assumption as well, but that requires a belay and all sorts of stuff that they're not interested in doing.
Do the poles look like they're the furthest away from everything?
They are. I mean, the very back of the lot, it's up against an area that has no development on the other side. I would point out that the in-track tracks with all of their poles and wires and everything are basically adjacent to this, so they're kind of neighbors as well.
Are they wood or metal?
These are wood poles. Yep.
Do the little kind of things that stick out, are they permanent in the pole once it's put together?
Yes. The, they call them staples, I believe, in here, right? That's what you're referring to, the half-infractious staples? Yeah, that's for the maintenance to be able to get up and adjust, and then get up to that level to be able to do rigging adjustments and stuff. But the top wire saggs and all they need to adjust to turn buckles to tighten the back end.
Yeah, and it's sort of...
I can't believe that someone wouldn't figure out how to climb that.
Oh, they'll figure it out.
They'll figure it out.
I'm thinking of four boys that would have.
Well, I'll just point out, that's, you know, 18 feet, the top 18 feet of a 30-foot pole, so it requires a decent ladder.
Yeah.
Not just a couple of kids and some creativity. Not that some won't try, but...
Just out of curiosity, is there any fencing that would go around this?
No.
No?
I mean, there's existing fencing right now for the baseball field. Eventually, that will come down. Right now, it's still up in place, but the long term is no, there's no fencing needed.
Okay. I don't see any contours, you know, showing existing grades in this area. Is there regrading of the area at all and clearing of the area at all that's required to...
Not a bit.
No disturbance at all?
You're drilling in two utility poles.
Okay, but no regrading at all?
No regrading at all.
Okay. The only thing I would say is if there is, you should file a sedimentation and erosion control plan.
Yeah.
It's even more important because of its proximity to the, you know, sensitive areas, but as long as there's no regrading, I'm fine. If any regrading is required, I think it should be reflected in the approval that the applicant indicated no regrading, it would require a sedimentation and erosion control plan during construction.
Fully agree.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve that, yes?
So, I just want to ask one question before we go on, and it's really to Keith. So, if we approve this, let's just say you come back, and now you want to put, you know, a...
High ropes.
I'm sorry?
A high ropes or something up on top of this?
Right, or maybe you want to put a structure, you know, an open structure, and you want it to be that tall. Is this giving precedence that you now have a structure on there that's already that tall? Because I can see that that could happen in the future.
Well, I would agree, and I think that's what our discussions have been around, to make sure this doesn't somehow, you know, allow unforeseen circumstances here or somewhere else.
Exactly.
If there was the ability to, as a condition of the approval, say that this is not a structure, not suitable for a structure at the top of it or something like that, it would be very incommemorable to them.
Yeah.
That would satisfy, I don't know...
I don't know if you can do that, though.
Well, as we talked about, it's not a...
That's like spot zoning kind of thing.
Right. It's not a, there's nothing built on top of it, right?
I understand, and it seems so simple. I just want to be very sure that we are not inadvertently putting ourselves into a box.
No, it's a good, it's a good, it's a good point, and I mean, you know, zoning does limit the height of structures, not just buildings necessarily. And there's a definition of what structure is, which is basically anything that has a permanent location on the ground. There are a few exceptions, things like fences, flagpoles, mailboxes and things like that, but not necessarily play equipment or things like that.
Do the flags on them, it's allowed?
Yes.
So, there's no reason why our approval can't have a stipulation or a footnote or something that says this is no way a precedent for other structures on the property?
I don't think you can do that.
Hmm?
I don't think you can do that.
Can't do that? Why not?
I could be wrong, but I do not think that you can say, well, allow this once and only here under these circumstances, and it can't be used as a precedent for anything else. Keith? I think you can do that.
Yeah, I mean, it's a judgment call, but, you know, I guess I would have to agree with you. That it's hard to say that it's not, if the definitions say otherwise.
Right, exactly.
Can we add the stipulation that no disturbance of the ground other than to auger for the post holes is included in this permit without the filing of a sedimentation and erosion control plan?
Could we make the stipulation be that the utility poles can't be used for anything other than this particular low ropes course?
I don't think that's the issue.
I know.
I think the issue is more that 10 years from, I mean, 10 years from now, you have a change in the plan, and you want to put something on that piece that, you know, just an open, I'm just trying to think of the word, like what you took down, the...
Pavilion?
Pavilion, thank you. An open pavilion, and this is used as, it can be 30-foot tall. That is what I'm worried about, not that you're going to do something with this pole. That's what it is, and I don't think, and Keith has kind of said, that you got to be careful, because that is what could happen.
What is the height limit on structures?
25 feet in this zone.
Right.
So, this is about 35 with five buried underground, so it's, you know, about five feet over that.
So, what would be the effort for you to make it 25 feet? I'm just asking, I'm curious.
Yeah, it would obviously get cut down by five feet, and then they have to adjust all the cabling and everything concurrently.
Which is a math, I meant just a math equation.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's the end of the world by any stretch. We'll certainly do that if that's what...
So, the poles will probably have to be closer together.
They have to be closer together a little bit.
And not quite as exciting a pendulum swing.
Yeah, and it's just one of those, again, because it was, as we have said, it's a discussion about, is it a structure? Does it have to comply with the height requirement? And if it is, and it does, then we will, but...
I think you have a valid point, yeah.
Could you make it a flagpole?
I'd be happy to make it a flagpole.
I mean, seriously.
I could put two flags, I could put one of them, and have a cable between them.
Does that work?
By the definition of structure, that would solve the problem.
Then I'm installing two flagpoles that might be cabled together.
I mean, Keith, seriously, I mean, you said an example is a flagpole.
It could. I guess, you know, maybe you could have other people building things and putting a flag on it and saying it's a flagpole, but I mean...
Simpler, it's cleaner, just to cut five feet off, it's a math. It's not asking for a bigger space, actually. You can incorporate it into the space that you have without making any changes, and it's just a geometry equation, right?
You calling it a flagpole is a stretch, okay. Is there any reason to think that if we allowed this to be constructed as proposed, that the next structure on the property would automatically be okay if it was 35 feet tall? Yeah, I don't think so.
No, especially if it were a building or something like that.
My point exactly is that we could approve this specific project without committing the planning and zoning commission from, you know, now and forever to having structures that tall on that property.
Well, that's a variance. That's, you can't do that just for one project.
So, we send them...
That's my whole point.
Send them to ZBA. Get variance.
At that point, it wouldn't be worth, I mean, this needs to be installed for camp in a couple of weeks, so we'll just...
And you could live with a 25-foot height?
If that's what we have to do, yes.
Do we hear a motion on this with the height and the soil erosion and stipulations on the...
Make a motion to approve it with the change on the height to be the 30 feet or 25 foot, is that what it's...
Total height?
Total height, 25 foot, and a sediment erosion plan if there's any additional grading or for the...
Thank you, Ryan.
Chuck out.
Second?
Thank you, Fred. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, Carrie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chad.
Thanks for coming.
So, items 6A and 6B under Old Business, we will recommend tabling until the next meeting. This is PZ 2207 SPA and CAM at 20 Clark Street, and PZ 2210 SPA and GPP 392 Liberty Street. So, no action needed on that. Adoption of the Stonington Affordable Housing Plan, that will be at tomorrow's special meeting at this room at 6:00 PM. So, no action on that tonight here, and that just leads to our public hearings. And before we get to the first one, just want to say, if anyone's here for it, that the public hearing for Brookside at 111 South Broad Street, Pocatuck, is going to be opened and immediately continued to the May 17th meeting per the applicant's request.
Do we want to get that formality out of the way?
Yeah, we might as well now that we're talking about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Pursuant to the general statutes of the state of Connecticut, revision of 1958 and all amendments thereto, and pursuant to the zoning regulations of the town of Stonington, Connecticut, and the Planning and Zoning Commission hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing at the Stonington Board of Education District Office, 40 Field Street, Pocatuck, Connecticut, on Tuesday, April 19th, 2022, at 7:00 PM on the following applicant, the PZ 2206 SUP and GPPP Brookside Associates. Special use and ground water protection permit applications for an affordable housing project submitted pursuant to CGS 830G proposed consists of 100 housing units and associated improvements. Property located at 111 South Broad Street, Pocatuck, assessors map 37 block 1, lot 1A, zone GC60.
Thank you, Lynn. Seated for this will be Ryan Deasy, Chuck Sheehan, myself, Ben Filbrick, Fred Dykman, and Lynn Conway. And we just go ahead and post...
Make a motion to continue the meeting.
Thank you, Ryan.
17th.
You have a motion to continue to the next meeting.
Second.
Thank you, Lynn. All those in favor?
Aye.
So, Carrie. Have to close? No, I don't close it.
No, we won't close that one just yet.
Shucks.
Okay, the next application is PZ 2201 SUP and CAM Secaroli LLC Special Use Permit and Coastal Area Management Review Applications for the renovation and demolition of a portion of an existing restaurant building and construction of a new one-story, 5,000-square-foot building for retail and accessory storage. Property located at 29 Old Stonington Road Mystic. Assessors map 153 block 1, lot 4, zone GC60.
Thank you, Lynn. For tonight, we have Ryan Deasy, Chuck Sheehan, myself, Ben Filbrick, Fred Dykman, and Lynn Conway. And the process is, there's a sign-up sheet up by the front door for those who would like to speak pro-con or general comments. We'll first hear from the applicant, and then we'll hear from the public. There'll be rebuttal if need be by the applicant. Staff will have input. We'll have board questions. At which point, we'll close the hearing. Commission will have discussion and hopefully vote this evening. And I think just so we all get used to it, I'm going to ask the public after last meeting that we'll try to have a code of conduct or some rules of order for the public hearings. And I'd like to, I hope the commission agrees with me, that we will not tolerate applause or booing when there's a comment by the public, and we would like to hear everybody who has something to say, pro-con or in general comments. I don't want to ever slate anybody's time. Lastly, or next to last, please turn off your cell phones, and there are also three fire exits from this room. Thank you, Sergio. All yours.
No problem. I'll try to not make such a resounding presentation that will warrant applause, or hopefully no cases either.
Maybe it'll be from us.
For the record, Sergio Chorenzia with Chorenzia and Associates, offices located at 99 Mechanic Street in Pocatuck, Connecticut. The plans up for you this evening were prepared by my office. Under my responsible charge, I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. With me here this evening, owner of the property, George Secaroli, Secaroli LLC. Also with me is John Kodama, who is going to have an interest or has an interest in purchasing one of the buildings that has been designed for the restaurant, and Rebecca Nolan, landscape architect, who also prepared some of the plans, landscape plans. Peter Springstiel, he's intended to be here this evening, but he got caught up at another public hearing, so he may or may not be showing up. We'll go on with our presentation. Myself and Rebecca will take questions, and I will do my best to muddle through the architectural plans and answer questions on those if Peter doesn't show up. On the screen behind you, I just brought up the Town GIS map, just to give you some context on the location of the property. You all should be relatively familiar with it because you provided a special use permit for this property not too long ago, back in June of 2021. The plan at that point was to leave the building and just do some renovations to the property and the building itself. But to orient you, this is on Old Stonington Road, 29 Old Stonington Road. To the east and to the north is vacant residential property, mostly encumbered by coastal wetlands, tidily influenced coastal wetlands, excuse me. To the west, Mystic Coastal Flooring, which I believe was subject to an approval for some mixed-use residential taking place in that property, but has not been constructed yet. Just was here this evening, the Dog Watch barbecue. To the south, southwest, to the south, the Denzmore Oil Property, I believe it's under construction now. Also, some, some mixed use taking place there with some residential, residential units. And then to the southeast, the Quambock Firehouse. Just as a reminder, just to put it in context, there is a one-way access onto Stonington Road going in the east to westerly direction. And there is a two-way access in and out on the other side, on the westerly side. So anyone entering from this side also has to exit on this side. And there is a one-way entrance. And then the residential neighborhood up on Lamb's Way up to the east. This is, this being, you know, the transitional area between some of the residential property and then getting into closer to Mystic, into more commercial-type property. I'll just remind everybody of the previous approval. That was approved by this commission. See if this will load up. I think it's going to take a minute here. I have a hard copy of it as well if need be. It just doesn't want to respond. Here it comes. Maybe you have to open this back up just to. Just give me one moment here. Here we go. Let's see if this opens up for me. It does not want to open. So I will just describe to you, I think most of you are aware of, actually, I'll bring up the, oh, here it is. Sorry about that. So this, as you recall, there was some reconfiguration of some parking, but largely the building was not going to be changed. There was an approval for a small patio that was under a previous special use permit that carried through, through with the approvals. We added a dumpster to the back. And the biggest change that, to the site was the introduction of a couple of outside vendors. Our new proposal, and the accessways weren't going to change. It was just some reconfiguration of parking to optimize the parking on the site. Yep, good.
Excuse me for interrupting. How did we leave it for Old Stonington Road? You're going to provide a sidewalk or you were not going to provide a sidewalk back then?
I don't believe there was any condition on that approval, that there was a formal sidewalk, no.
The problem was there wasn't any room in the right-of-way for it.
I'm not sure if that's such the case is that it was, there was just no sidewalk there. It was a, it was a curb without any raised sidewalk.
Okay. So is that curb going to stay roughly in that position?
Yeah, we weren't, we weren't planning on changing any of the curbing. It was going to stay right where it was.
Because people now are jumping it and parking, straddling it and parking.
They're parking over it. Yeah, there, there's not a plan right now to, to make any changes there, I don't believe. We're still going to keep the right-of-way as is. There wasn't any comment from town staff on any adjustment to that. But if there's something that the commission would like us to entertain, we'd be open to entertaining it.
Thank you.
So the new proposal that we're bringing forth this evening is a portion of this building to remain. About half the building is going to be removed. You can faintly see the line here of where the old building is. Zoom in a little bit more. It's a little bit muddled and covered over. But basically, you're going to demo that portion of the building, which was, I believe, was an addition at some point in the past, and it's not in very good shape. That portion of the building is going to be demolished and removed, and it'll become a parking area. The existing building to remain, we are going to maintain that approved patio deck area in the front. Embellish it with some landscaping and this is an ADA ramp. So stairs on this side, ADA ramp to access the building on this side, and a nice sidewalk along the building for people to park up against in our ADA spaces on this side. John is going to be occupying this with the, with the restaurant. I believe Go Fish is going to be moving here. But he also wanted to soften and lessen the impervious nature of this whole site, this sea of pavement. So we're proposing some crushed stone at the entrance of the, of the, of the restaurant side. Access still remaining in the same spot. And this does two things. One, it does soften that entrance. You don't have that whole sea of pavement, that hot asphalt. But also, it's an improvement stormwater-wise to reduce the impervious area. Once that gets compacted, it's not completely, you know, pervious, but it does allow for some stormwater infiltration. And it's better for, especially being so close to the tidal wetland over, over on this side, which everything just sheds off without much treatment. So this, this is, this is an improvement to the stormwater.
It is all crumbling apart, too.
It is, yeah. By the time we get done with this, it's probably safe to say that a lot of the pavement's going to have to be, if not all of it's going to be replaced with this new plan. So as such, we've put erosion controls all around the perimeter. We are, we are still not encroaching into this vegetated area, but we are taking advantage of the additional parking also, which will be crushed stone up in the north-westerly portion of the property to gain a little bit more parking for the proposed retail and for, for the restaurant. Restaurant will have new grease traps, all public utilities. We've consulted with WPCA, and I believe that there's additional flow afforded for the restaurant, which is 175 seats. Some of you may recall that the previous approval was for a 100-seat restaurant. So that's a relatively significant increase from what we had previously approved under our last special use permit. However, it's not as high as what the previous restaurant was approved for. I think it was close to 200, 250 seats at one point under the previous special use permit. So we're still under what the previous approvals were, but over, yeah, let's see. The previous restaurant had a capacity of 250 people. It was a 180-seat restaurant with an addition of 100-seat banquet hall. So that was, you know, the historic use. And we're going, we were previously approved as of the most recent approval for 100, and we're going up to 175. We can accommodate all the parking on site with 175 rest, 175-seat restaurant. And then the secondary building, we're basically taking that structure and kind of just moving it over and creating some separation between the buildings. Is 3,600 square feet of retail space. And in order to get the parking to work, we had to reduce some of that space just to the storage, accessory storage of that building. It was conditioned on the previous approval that any changes to the buildings, we'd have to make sure that the parking would be accommodated. We'd be happy to stipulate that as well. And to that point, I would like the commission to entertain as a stipulation of our previous approval that the retail space also could be utilized as retail restaurant, personal services, financial services, daycare center, or office without further commission review. So just something to think about as we go through the rest of this. It was stipulated as our, part of our previous approval. We would like to afford the same in case something changes. If the building changed or if there was a material change to the site plan, we would come back to this commission if, if so pleased though. So same accessways, the utilities have covered the stormwater. We've gone through one round of comments with the town engineer, and I think he had some, a few outstanding, I think about seven comments left of some details, which I don't think are insurmountable that we can take care of at final plan. I'd be happy to review those in any amount of detail if there are concerns with that. Just want to highlight that we are going to be taking the entirety of the new roof because it's being torn down and rebuilt. They call it the new roof. And there's a stormwater feature on the west side where the, all the roof drains will discharge into. It'll provide an area for retention, any, it's roof runoff. So there isn't a terrible amount of sediment that, that comes off of the roof. But there's some areas for some primary settlement. Some of the parking area will also go into this, this stormwater feature. It'll allow it to be stored, infiltrated, and then anything that exceeds its capacity would just overflow and continue on in the same direction. The whole site pretty much drains from the southwest to the northeast into a portion of which is a freshwater wetland, a small fringe of freshwater wetland, and then the coastal tidal influence wetland. So we purposely stayed outside of the 100-foot wetland upland review area with any new development. And the only development taking place in that is the renovation of the existing impervious surfaces in the addition of a dumpster. Same things that were going on in the previous application. All the surfaces are generally the same. There's a garage back there that's going to also remain.
That will remain, the garage?
The garage will remain, yep. Don't anticipate any, you know, significant increase in traffic as from our previous application. We still are maintaining the same amount of parking as I, as I indicated. It is zoned for the retail as, as of right by site plan approval. And the restaurant is by special use permit why we're here this evening. In conjunction with the special use permit, we are also requesting a coastal area management approval. And we've been, I think we've put our best foot forward to take care of all the environmental concerns, making sure that the restaurant waste is handled appropriately. Dumpsters, grease traps tying into the city sewer and handling the stormwater, improving it from what is there today. With that, I can either answer any questions. You can hold your applause till later. But Rebecca Nolan is here. She can go over some of the landscaping components.
The new building, could you tell us what the retail versus storage split is of that building?
The square footage?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's 3,600 square feet of retail and one, just over 1,000 square foot of storage. So it's a one. I don't know what that, that split is, but.
And, and that building will be, will be built up high enough that we're not going to have a flooding issue?
Yeah, I can touch upon that. So the existing building is going to remain and does not need to be FEMA compliant.
Right.
Assuming that it stays under the 50% of the, the value of the structure. You have the improvements can exceed 50% of the value. The new structure will be code compliant, and it must be for flood, flood hazard. So I don't know if you can hear me, but I could bring up Peter's plans. There's flood vents underneath the building, and the first floor is elevated high enough where it's above the flood elevation.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I, it's, I'm sorry, I misspoke. That's why Peter needs to be here. The, actually, the finished floor is still below flood, but I believe because it's, it's a commercial space, it's allowed to be within that flood zone. And I can bring those plans up. But they will, but they do need flood complacency in that respect. There's a combination of wet flood proofing and dry flood proofing.
Thank you. And I had a question on the grease traps. Wasn't that a Water Pollution Control Authority had questions on the grease trap?
Doug's concern, the director, he wanted to make sure that we had adequate capacity for the grease traps. I can tell you right now that there's two, 3,000 gallon tanks, I believe, and they meet public health code.
Great, thank you.
So, and he'll have final review on that anyway.
Just out of curiosity, with the garage, is that the existing outbuilding that's shown there?
Correct.
Okay. What would that be used for? Storage of any kind of chemicals, grease?
I don't know. I'd have to defer. John, will you be using that garage for storage or?
Not related to the operation, but you know, about day-to-day things.
Yeah, I mean, if you're concerned about, you know, environmentally sensitive things going in there, we could stipulate that, you know, no hazardous. I think it's been presented in my narrative that there's no hazardous materials that'll be stored on site. Any, you know, any, I believe that any heavy greases will be transported off-site and stored properly. So I, I'm not sure what that garage is going to be used for. George, did you have any, you didn't have any thoughts on it, right? It's a, if it's a vehicle though, correct? You can, if it, like, it's a garage for a vehicle or, or put in, like, could go.
Hi, miss.
So, yeah, if there was a concern for any environmental sensitive things, we could stipulate some.
Okay, thank you.
So just, just a couple of things. I just want to make sure I understand. So you have a permit currently for 100-seat restaurant?
Correct.
In this application, are you asking for 175-seat restaurant?
Correct.
Okay. And you have enough parking for an additional 75 spaces?
Yes, that is correct. I can go over those parking numbers with you if you'd like.
Okay.
So the required number of spaces is 86, and we've provided 86. We're right on, on that cost. The retail space requires one space per 200 square foot of storage. So with 3,600 square feet of retail space, we need 18 spaces. The storage is one space per 2,000 square feet. So we only need one parking space for the balance of the, the square footage in that, in the new building. The restaurant is one per three seats. So if you do the math, 175 seats, you need 59 spaces plus 12 spaces for the employees.
And what type of restaurant is this going to be?
That'd be served, I believe it's, John can, can, you know, but if you've been to Go Fish?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's going to be Go Fish. So it's, it's a, I don't know what you would categorize that restaurant as, but they serve lunch and dinner. And I believe we had hours of operation, 11:30 AM to 9:00 PM, Sunday through Thursday, and 11:30 AM to 10:00 PM Friday is happening.
Okay, so that's a different, those are different hours of operation as well, correct?
Different from?
From the original application?
I don't recall what the original was. I'm sorry, I have to look it up.
And did you account for the, the vendor spaces that you need?
Oh, those are going away. So this.
Oh, so you're not going to have the vendors there anymore?
This special permit, correct me if I'm wrong, Keith, would supersede the previous one or would it? You couldn't have both, especially those are definitely going away.
Right. Yeah, I think because it changes the original so much, it just eliminates that.
They're not included in your plans.
Yeah.
No, they are not. So obviously, they're not included.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure because there was a lot of discussion about that and a lot of.
That's a good question.
And then my other question is the lighting plan. So I'm, I'm just going to assume that this is a brand-new parking lot all the way around. Are you going to have lights and whatnot? Because that wasn't part of, how's that going to work?
This is the photometric plan, and there will be lights. There'll be lights along the front of the property shining down and into the site. I'm sure you all, we've gone through photometric plans that these, the fog candles are indicated by these numbers. I know they're difficult to see, but we have a zero fog candle or very low, .1, near the perimeter. Definitely on this side of the property where it would affect neighboring property, it's zero at the property line. But you can see there's a light pole at the back corner here. I know this is difficult to read. There's one up here, one here, and one here. And then I think there's another. one here. And then I think there's another light pole up in the back, and then a couple more, and then one more back here, all shining into the site.
Okay.
So yes.
I'm just thinking about Lamb's Way there and that neighborhood, and how that could be affected.
The light shed on that side should be zero by the time you get more than 20 feet, 20, 30, 40, 40 feet away from the, the property.
Okay. And then, and I do know that in the past, you know, this was quite a large restaurant and had a lot of seats, which you, you've already mentioned. But things have changed since the building was in use. And one of the things is that that road is a one-way road now. So were there any concerns at all about the increase in traffic for 100, you know, 100 seat versus 175, and then adding retail traffic, which would certainly be more, because I would assume that they wouldn't be there as, for as long a period? So more in and out type of traffic? What was the thought process for that?
I didn't generate any trip generation on this site. Basically, we, because it was, had a previous use of the, the number of seats that it supported, we did not generate any traffic study on this site. So we're basically going off of the premise that it was, it supported that at one point. We also went to the police commission, and they didn't have any concerns. They had a lot of concerns about parking on the street, which we shared, but we're, we're providing the parking off-street for this site. So I did, we did not, did not generate any, what, what we would do is a trip generation, where we'd identify how many, how many trips there would be to the site, to and from the site, based on the ITE, which is the, the tra- traffic institute, Institute of Traffic, Institute of Traffic Engineers?
Yeah.
There's a, there's a source we use. But even such, we'd have to compare it to something. So I need to, for making an comparative analysis of what was there previously, otherwise, if we're just saying that it was a vacant site, it's, it's not really a fair comparison as to what the site had supported in the past on the same road, which has not changed. And it's, it's not a one-way road. It's, I want to make that, clarify, clarify. It's a one-way in on one side, but it is a two-way, two-way road.
Right. You're, you're absolutely correct. I misspoke. What type of retail are you thinking about in that building?
I don't think it's been decided yet. George, did you have any? We, we don't know. That's one of the things that, we got a tenant or a buyer for one of the buildings, but no, nothing specific yet for the others.
Is the, is the fire department okay with this too? I mean, that road is pretty packed with cars already. And I was wondering if they had any concerns about getting those trucks in and out of there?
I believe that the application has made its rounds to town staff and departments. I don't know if the fire chief or the fire marshal had any further comment on this.
No.
We had, we had, I had spoken to the fire, fire chief there when we had our previous proposal. And considering that we're not changing the, it's the same, same intensity of use with respect to parking, we didn't think that it was going to have any significant impact or, or increase from, or change from the previous one. But I'd have to defer to Keith if there was any comment.
Do you know, trucks at Densmore keep coming and going? The oil trucks at Densmore keep coming and going?
Yeah, that's true, I guess, yeah.
All day long.
Do they? Okay.
I just, yeah, I mean, I, I just feel like this one-way, it's a very narrow street. And it's now went from very minimum traffic, right? And then one retail that, that had some traffic, the Dog Watch barbecue. And now we're opening it up for 175-foot, uh, seat restaurant and a retail space, a one-
Then there's one exit.
And one exit where the fire department is for that whole district. I, I just want to make sure that the fire department and the police commission understand any change in scope, no matter how minor, and have had a chance to comment.
Yeah, they've, the fire district has had the chance to comment, but we just didn't get any comments from them on this. Some of the fire districts comment on applications more than others. And we just didn't receive any comments. I don't think we received comments on the original one either, but.
Right. I do know Quamba was instrumental in getting that to be a one-way at the east end of Old Stone Road.
And remember, we-
Police commission has commented.
Police commission has, yeah.
Right.
They had no comment.
Well, and remember, we had that very severe accident on that corner a few years ago, which resulted in one of the residents having permanent brain injury. I mean, it was a terrible accident. Crossing the street on, on Route 1, where the one-way entrance is he, they were crossing the street and they got hit. And it was, so that's why I'm surprised that we have not had any comments, but.
Well, if I may, the Dog Watch doesn't have a lot of on-site parking. We are providing the required parking on the property. So we're actually be taking cars off of the street. It'll be a place for, to clear up the street, hopefully. So I could, that, that's all I could offer. Is there going to be more traffic coming in and out? I can't answer that right now. My assumption is that it won't be because it's, it won't be much more intense. Once the, once the restaurant is, is full and people are parked, you know, interior, we'll be taking those, those cars off. It doesn't preclude people from parking on the street. I will, I will give you that. That still can happen because it is a public street and people can't park. But one of the things that the police commission impressed upon us is hoping that the owners of this area would try to coalesce together to make sure the roads weren't, to kind of police themselves so the police didn't have to. So I think you're going to have a good tenant here, a good owner. And I think John, John has a good track record in the community, whereas he, whereas would hopefully not cause a, an issue, any public disturbance or any hazardous issues with, with traffic.
Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, is there going to be any changes to the signage on either of these buildings or, you know, on the roadway for the restaurant or other businesses?
Yes. Why don't I go ahead and go into, because I don't think Peter's going to be here very soon. I believe one of his, it's the new building. I believe one of the buildings shows, there it is.
Yeah.
This is the, this is a rendering of the existing building that will be modified. You can see there's the sign. John believes that most people are going to be coming from the Mystic Side and coming in. So that's why the signage is on that side of the building. You can see the, the ramp in the front, the stairs in the front, and the, and the front patio, from whatever I recall from Peter's presentation at Architecture Review Board. There is this adding, there is this addition of this feature here, just a, a small inch. This is the main entryway. But other than that, the buildings, by and large, are, this one's going to be, with the exception of the removal of the portion of the building and a new wall going in over here with some windows, this is largely the, what the building's going to be remaining the same. Just some new paint and maintaining that vertical board.
Any signage on the roadway itself for Go Fish?
No, there's actually a sign out there now. I believe that's going to be taken down. We're going to replace it with a tree.
The wind this morning might have taken it down.
Yeah, you're right.
So Rebecca will get into there. We have some street trees, and we're removing that signage. And there will be signage on the new building as well, I believe. Not sure, I'm not sure Peter could have.
Any soil testing on site in the vicinity of the gravel parking lots and the detention basin?
Have not done any soil testing on site. But as a condition of the town engineer's approval, we will have to do some perk testing for the area of the stormwater management basin.
Okay.
And if there's any unsuitables, we'll remove those and put the appropriate material in.
Perfect. I'll find that. Could you bring up the slide again, the site plan sign, self-slide rather? That's it. In the vicinity of the detention basin, you said if the capacity has exceeded, it flows to the northeast, out of the northeast corner of the basin?
Yep. This area up here.
So there is like an emergency spillway out of there, and it does flow to the northeast without flooding the building?
Correct. Yeah, that'll, it'll just go over the parking area.
And not towards the adjacent building?
I'm sorry?
Not towards the adjacent building?
Not towards the adjacent building.
It's fairly good size, so I don't imagine it's going to exceed the capacity of the thing.
No, you can see-
Depending on the percolation.
I'm sorry, say it again?
Depending on the percolation.
Yeah, depending on the infiltration right there. But once again, we took the tact that it's an improvement. And the town engineer concurred that it's a good step to, to put in some additional stormwater treatment, even though there is no increase in impervious area. And actually, we'll be decreasing it by the removal of some pavement by adding landscaping and some crushed stone driveways.
And then back to the adjacent owner's slide in the beginning, you did point out that, that one of the tenants on the street is the fire department, correct?
The fire department's down, this is the one you talked about?
So that is the fire department right there?
That's the Quamba, yep, fire department down there.
So they're fairly close if there's an issue?
They're, yep, they're close.
Like they don't have to drive? Thank you. No further questions?
I think Lynn's concern was, yeah, they don't get locked to get to wherever they're going.
Exactly.
But like I said, it's the, the commission and the chief said they would hope that they don't need to police this area very closely if all the members of the community try to, to put their best foot forward to police themselves and their, and their, their patrons. Which owning a restaurant can be difficult, but it's, I'm assuming it's better than when it used to be a nightclub, so.
Thank you, sir.
And so is there only going to be one sign on the retail building then? Or is every office going to have a sign? How's that, how's that?
Right, and now, so Keith can correct me if I'm wrong, but multi-tenant signage is subject to your approval. So we would have to come back if we decide to put up a multi-tenant sign. Right now, we're only proposing signage on, wall signage on the building, which is calculated based on the linear footage of the front of the building along the frontage. So each building will, is afforded that certain square footage of signage. I don't know what it is off the top of my head. But we would, we would, as part of this approval, like to have that wall signage. It's based on a calculation. I don't know if you need, do you need commission approval, Keith, for that? Or is it, is that something administrative as well?
Well, multi-tenant signage programs that sort of show how you allocate signs, many signs for one commercial site or building, need the commission's approval. I've been considering what they have, the multi-tenant signage program, because it shows how the signage is divvied up on the building.
So I believe, this is the front of the building. Peter has indicated these two boxed-out areas for proposed signage. So assuming this has two tenants, I don't know if you would consider that multi-tenant signage, or if this is just wall signage that you're entitled to based on the square footage?
Yeah, I mean, we consider it multi-tenant. It doesn't have all the details of materials and things like that, but it would have to meet our, our signage regulations. Technically, they're big enough to be considered special detached signs, which normally means you'd need a special use permit to have a wall sign of over 18 square feet. But they're here before you're getting a special use permit anyway.
So they're going to come back for it?
Well, this, this is proposed at 20.25 square feet. So if you went to 18, they'd be legal?
Well, it is legal now as long as they get a special use permit. If some building just decided to do this, on an existing building, let's say, there would have to be a special use permit.
So we don't know what those signs look like, but we would like to reserve that space for a sign. That's what we're asking for this evening.
But it wouldn't be lit?
No, I don't know, unless it, it met the requirements of, of a sign that to be lit. But I don't know if you can come back for that.
It couldn't be fully internally lit per our regulations. It would have to be either externally lit or have very limited internal illumination.
So we could say, we could say signage, the size as indicated on the plan, not lit? And, and grant that special use permit now, correct?
Well-
Want to save them a trip back again, you say?
Right. That's what I was trying, you know, so signage as indicated for size, but not lit, kind of something like that. Anyway, you would have to-
And if we wanted it lit, we'd come back to you with the specifications for the lighting?
I mean, would external illumination be okay? Because, you know, most businesses have some sort of lighting on the signs.
Some under, yes, maybe some under the, under the soffit, some downward lighting, just to illuminate the sign.
I'm just, I don't want to see these big spotlights, you know, that's not where we're going here, so.
Yeah, but you know, like downward facing, external illumination.
Yeah. We don't want it to look like a strip.
Yeah.
Understood. Yeah, I think it would be understated in, in soft lighting, just to illuminate the signs.
I do, I do feel, you said you would like to also specify that you could have a change of use without coming back for a specially, a special use permit. And I think one of the uses that you listed was daycare. And I just feel that given the parking lot situation, the street situation, you know, that might be one where we would want to see the blown-out plan of how, for the safety of the children during, that, that we understood how the traffic flow and the outside area, et cetera, et cetera, was going to, you know, be maintained, separated, et cetera. So if, if we excluded that from the list, would, would that be something to consider? You know, I think about the discussions we had for the single daycare site and the modifications we made to that based on, you know, safety concerns. I think you would probably be more apt to have that conversation with a dual parking lot situation as well.
To, to be honest with you, the site plan would likely change because traffic flows would be different, pickup, drop-off, that kind of thing. We'd need an area in the back. We'd probably forfeit a lot of the parking for a playground.
I was going to say.
So we'd have to, we'd have to come back for site plan approval. It would not be special use permit, though, I don't believe.
No.
It would be, it would just be for site plan approval. But to your point, yes, if we, if we change that, I, we have no issue of coming back to this commission.
Yeah.
Fair enough. Fred? Moving right along?
Yeah, I, I could go through some more of the building. I know you had, there was one concern of the finished floor elevation. I'll just bring to your attention that there are, these along the bottom are the, are flood vents.
Understood.
And I'm sorry, so I have to, this is why Peter's here. The base flood elevation is 11. The finished floor is up at 12. So it is, it is a foot above for the new building to make it code compliant. So I'm sorry if I, if I have any confusion on that.
So what's the total height of the new building?
The total height of the building? It's nowhere, I can tell you it's nowhere near what we're allowed to. We just need to get to the right plan, which shows the-
27 feet.
Is that what it says there?
No, no, 20. 23 off of the- 23 off of the...
Here we go.
Yeah.
23 feet from the finished floor.
So plus 12?
No, no, no.
No, that's, that's 23.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said the finished floor was...
Not elevation, 23 feet from 12. If you want the elevation of the peak of the roof, it would be 23 plus 12.
Plus 12.
That's the elevation.
It's 35 feet.
That's, it's not 35 feet. That's the elevation. So the, the height of the building is, is 23.
Oh, sorry.
And I believe it's 27 from, I'm not sure.
From the surface.
From grade. But I believe 35 is the, is 35 the limit in this? So we have it in our zoning table. 30 feet is what is, is allowed. So we are under, we are, we're under the, the building. These are all single, these are, it's a single story building. Except for the existing building has this area in the back. See if I can toggle back to the proposed, the existing building. There is a second story. This is the back of the building. It's, there's like an, an office up, up in that area. Oops, sorry about that.
Is that, that's existing?
That's existing.
Okay. Okay. Can you see it?
It'll, it'll probably be used as an office. I can go through more details of the building if Peter ends up showing up. He can probably walk you through, but Rebecca Nolan is here. She can walk you through some of the landscaping and the improvements we've made there.
Chuck, do you have any stormwater questions or issues?
No, no. It's very well explained on the application.
Okay.
Appreciate the details.
All right. Thanks, Sergio. And thank you to the board for the opportunity to present. My name is Rebecca Nolan, landscape architect. I was also part of the project team that came before you last summer. So I'm going to walk through some of the elements of that plan and then I'm going to show you what has, what we've added with this new application. So the first thing is along the west side of the property, we have an evergreen buffer. And that was notated to be six foot height minimum as part of the stipulations of that prior application. Those trees are mixtures. The idea here is to use more of a natural looking buffer rather than just a straight line of arborvitae. We're, you know, trying to include some native species in here and really trying to make it look a little bit more natural. It's also going to butt the, the stormwater area, so we want it to look as natural as possible in that area as well. So that's the, that's along the west side buffer. There's actually a, it's a little hard to see here, but we've got the row of evergreens kind of right up along the property line. There's actually additional space on the opposite side of the property line, the adjourning property.
To the west.
Mystic coastal, I think it's coastal flooring. So there is opportunity to even enhance that landscape more if, if they do come before, you know, a board for, for any sort of changes there. But with the space that we have there, we're, we're showing a 10-foot buffer along that side. And then another piece of that previous application that we put through was to include three street trees. Right now, along Old Stonington Road, there are really no trees. This is an opportunity, obviously, to, to include some street trees. The Densmore property who came before this board, I think a couple of months ago, had also proposed some street trees in here. So I'm showing those so you can see where they are in relationship to the ones that we are proposing. We have quite limited space because of the edge of the parking lot is, is right up against the property line. So we're really utilizing the space at each end. And then George and John have graciously allowed us to use the space for the old sign, the multi-tenant sign we will be replacing with a tree. And then there's another one down here at the corner of the, the second entrance. So just to note, those are pin oaks. I'm showing a picture of it down here at the bottom. The idea really is to start to kind of create a dialogue with the streetscape. Oaks are also proposed on the other property across the street, so we'll start to get, you know, some, some idea of a, of an urban streetscape with some trees in the, in the public right-of-way area.
How big will they be when planted?
So all those trees go in at two and a half to three inch caliber. So usually that comes in at around, I don't know, eight to 10 feet if, if we're, you know, but it's, it's based on the caliber size. And just one more thing to note about that side of the street, we have the benefit of there not being any wires there. The, the utility poles are actually on the other side. So these are larger trees and they will, you know, will grow up and start to, to actually provide some shade. The, I talked a little bit about this, this buffer along this side with the stormwater area that that's proposed out of the new, out of this new permit. Down here on this end of the property, there's a mixture of kind of invasives along the edge of the property. They've, they've actually started to grow into the building. And so what we're proposing here is just to keep those at 10 feet, which is where they were when this property was maintained properly. Those, all the vegetation was kept 10 feet from the building. And really, I think that is to really just be able to have, you know, access around it. So we're proposing to just do the same trimming using hand methods around that outside of the building, just keeping within, you know, a 10-foot space. And then including new native species along that buffer. So there's a selection. You can see the photos of them, but they're really all of the native trees and shrubs that, that would have naturally grown in that area had it not been disturbed. The 16 by 20 deck area, that's shown here, that was also shown on Peter's plans where you saw the section. That is part of this new configuration. And what was quite nice about working with John and George was that, you know, they were willing to kind of create a nice landscaped area out front where it didn't exist before. If you remember the section looking, or if you've been down there, you know that, that the parking really goes right up to the edge of the building. And so this new layout actually allows us some really nice space. We are able to get in a small tree. We're able to get in some foundation plantings to kind of block the, the view of the ramp going up. So you kind of, you know, it's there and it's, it's allowing for accessible use from those parking spots, but you won't see it when you're, you know, coming in once those plants grow in. And then I would just say, you know, we're, we're trying to do that around the, the other side of the buildings as well. There's really not any foundation plantings existing right now. So, you know, on that shaded side of the building, we are proposing some ground cover. I think that was one of the questions was what was going to be right up against the building. And we're, we're really just showing some ground cover and where we have room, some evergreen shrubs. Same as the front of this building, we've also got a nice landscaped space out front of the proposed retail. Where again, showing the, the ramp would be kind of hidden behind the evergreen shrubs. And then we have the opportunity to have two small trees. So we're proposing birch trees there. So there'll be three of them, two in front of the proposed retail and one in front of the existing building. So we've got the three birch trees. We've got the three trees out front along the road. We've got two parking lot trees back here and then the buffer along this side. So, you know, significant changes to, you know, what is existing out there, using all native species, deer resistant plants. And the, the seed mix that would be in this, that we're proposing for the stormwater area is also all native plants and it's specified in, in the drawings that you have on L 103. I just want to mention, there are two bike racks in here. There's one that's for each building. So for, we've got one for the proposed retail right up here next to the, next to the parking. And then the other one is tucked in to the front of this building just next to the ramp. So there's two bike racks. And I think that kind of, that covers most of it. I'm, you know, I, you see this green line out front, you know, that is the town's property. I think it's, you know, our hope, it's not the, it's not part of this scope of work, but, you know, there is space there should the town want to, you know, create, you know, a tree lined street where we would, you know, have a tree, a tree space. So if it was sodded or whatever they might want to do there, we're, we're not putting any, we're not proposing anything in that area. So our street trees are on the, on George's property. So, you know, I'm just showing that for illustrative reasons, but I think the idea is to, you know, start thinking about how this could be greened up a bit and start to have a dialogue with the property across the street, which is also doing a similar proposal. I think that's everything. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
So the strip where you indicated it was invasive and it's kind of moving towards the building, you're just going to cut that back? Why not take it out and plant something that's not invasive in there?
So it's, what I'm showing right here is actually that, that is the trimmed out part. So right now, the, the plant material actually, it, it's really just overgrown, like grasses, vines, things that are kind of starting to...
Bittersweet, things like that. So we're going to take it out?
So we would take that out as part of this. And then within 10 feet of the building, there would, it would be the natural buffer that's already there. And most of the invasives are right up against the building because that's, that's where they, they tend to grow when, when it's not maintained. So, you know, there'll be no, no mowing or anything that would, you know, that we would propose for maintenance around this. It would really just be to do the hand trimming of any invasives that might come up in that area and then the addition of some of those like more tactical plant material that's, you see along the side here.
Have you seen the letter from, from DEP that we, we received? Letter's dated April 19th. We got it, I think, today.
Yes.
And the letter's very specific that that buffer that exists between the developed site and the tidal letland should not be disturbed. I, I agree that, you know, where it's growing up against a building, it has to be disturbed, but you may be, have to reconsider some of that selective trimming in there based on the recommendations of the, of DEP, the senior coastal planner that reviewed it, because they say quite succinctly that, that it should be maintained in perpetuity. So, and we just got that today, so.
Yeah, I think, I think what we're showing, you know, proposes that just that. It's, it's really this, this hatch that you guys can see here. That's the existing buffer. So we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be going into that area. It's really anything that's like starting to crawl over and really just starts to take over the, the building. It's just to keep it. But I think we could, we could clarify that in our response too.
Yeah, I think you should clarify that with them because as you know, this is a very specific letter for DEP. I very rarely see them say that they, they approve it and they do.
Yeah.
But their one condition is related to that vegetative buffer. So I agree that the selective clearing is something that you need to do. Definitely.
Is that something we could stipulate?
I don't think DEP mines taking out invasives, do they? And that's what that all is in there.
I know. I know. That's, if it weren't for the way that this was worded.
Right.
I would say clear it all out, you know?
Ryan, what would you...
I was just saying, is that something we could stipulate, you know, specifically to say, okay, you know, in response to DEP's letter, not to touch that?
I think this letter has to be included as a stipulation.
Yeah.
It wasn't received when we got the, the minutes. But it's a great letter for you in that it approves the, the project in very succinct terms, but it does make that recommendation. So if there's any, any wavering on, on that buffer, your engineer knows very well how to contact the right people. And I'm sure that they would approve the selective trimming that you've got here. But I would clear that with them. I've had extensive experience with them and you're, you're much better off dealing with blessings than asking for forgiveness in that area.
The, one more question for you. The strip along the road, that is the town property?
It is.
Yeah. You're not planning to do anything with that?
No. We're not planning, and, and actually, all of our improvements will be on the, on the owner's property. So even those three street trees there, even though they're street trees and we want them to feel like they're part of the, you know, right-of-way, the public realm, those are going to be installed on the, on the owner's property.
So is the berm, the border, the property line, do you think, Sergio?
Berms, Cape Cod berm.
I have to go back. I'm not sure which, which you're referring to. Let me, the site.
Along the street, there's a six inch petuinous berm.
That's actually this, this, this berm or this, it's loosely, it could be a curb. But, no, that's not the property line.
There's a loose word for it.
The property line is actually this solid black line and where the, the parking actually encroaches beyond it. Town engineer has made note of this and for our final plan, we'll have to adjust that. We'll have to make some minor adjustments. It's between one and three feet to keep all the parking on, on our site.
On, on your site?
Yep. It's, it's a very minor thing. It's just the survey came in later than, and we realized that there was an existing encroachment. With respect to anything in the town right-of-way, Keith has indicated, and I've experienced this, that you have to get a permit for any encroachment or any improvements in the town right-of-way from the Department of Public Works. So anything that we decide to do in there, even if we wanted to put a sidewalk or something, Ms. McCrell would be, would be the, the final determination on that along with the town engineer.
Do you happen to know the width of, you know, that town and property between...
Between the edge of pavement?
Yeah. Eight to 10 feet?
I don't know if it's that much. Where's the edge of the pavement here?
I mean, that could change the entire look if that was sodded.
Yeah.
Change the entire look of that street.
I think it would be a nice snow shelf. It'd probably keep people from parking on it, maybe. Maybe not. Maybe. People will park anywhere. See if I can measure from the edge of our parking. So that's 0.5, so that's, it's about 10 feet.
Okay.
Yep.
And I just have one other quick question. You know, it's a big parking lot. It's kind of broken up because it's not a big square, but it's a big parking lot. And you, you have put in three trees and that's nice, but maybe, is there any way you could put kind of an island or something, a couple of trees in between the two buildings in that section of the parking lot?
Unfortunately, we're so pressed for space to maintain the safe drive aisles and the amount of parking that we need. We, we, we considered it. Keith actually asked if we could put in some more pedestrian-friendly access between buildings. We just can't forfeit any parking to get the amount of retail and seats that make this project viable for, for our client.
I see a spot where you could get a tree.
I'm all ears. Wherever you think.
How about right?
One of these.
Excuse my bad form. How about right here?
Right here?
Yeah. If that were some kind of an island. I think it's a good suggestion.
It would break it up. It would, I think it would really add a lot of value, visual value.
I was just thinking the same. That, yeah, that, that is a viable spot.
Okay.
Win-win. We'll put a landscaped island.
That'd be great.
And it seems like that, you know, the strip, the right-of-way strip on the street, you know, there's a benefit to putting the grass strip there and that is the aesthetics. But it also, the way it is now sort of serves as like a poor man's sidewalk where you have like that little area of refuge over there. So there's sort of like a pro and con to the having the grass there.
I would beg to differ. In full disclosure, I live about an eighth of a mile away and I must go down this road once a week either by foot or by bike. And if you try to use that as a sidewalk, you're in and out of SUVs that have straddled that curve.
Yeah, because people park.
Yeah.
And the tumble-down sign is in the way. So it's, it's more of a jungle gym exercise than just walking on the street.
Yeah.
If it were allocated into some sort of snowshelf, as you said, I'm not sure the town would be willing to maintain it. Would you guys be willing to maintain it?
I have to consult with my client. I mean, if it's a grass strip, it's, I, I, I don't think that's a lot of maintenance.
I'm just trying to, you know, maybe we can get something to happen there. Because as someone who's lived there for 40 years, it's, this looks like a huge improvement to me.
I'd have to consult with my client.
Yeah.
See if it's something they would entertain.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I actually think you could change the whole look of that street.
It'd soften it.
I mean, really, what a great compliment to that area to be able to do that. You know, you've kind of resurrected a, a very dead space that's, that's kind of been neglected.
Neglected, absolutely.
And, boy, that would be great.
Do you have more presentations, Sergio?
No, I did want to make, as soon as we finish, Peter will probably walk in, but we won't hold you up any further. I did want to make just a comment since Mr. Sheehan brought it up. If you do intend on stipulating the DEP comments as part of your approval, we do have some of it, we very much appreciate the blessing that DEP has given this project for its stormwater management. It's just that we would respectfully request that the concept of maintaining this buffer in perpetuity, they weren't specific on what exactly they indicated as a buffer as far as the width of it and how far in. At, at one point, there was approved for parking all up in this area in the north here, and I have a previous plan that shows it. It's, we're not saying that we would pursue, you know, additional parking or clearing in that area, but words like "buffer in perpetuity" and "no more cut vegetation" really doesn't kind of just closes the door on us and it would make it very difficult moving forward. Whereas if, if you were to stipulate that letter, and I did speak with Keith over email, that letter is a recommendation to your commission. You still have the authority to adopt whatever their recommendations are or to say you don't want to. But we have no other issues with that letter with the exception that that buffer is not specified and we would be opposed to no further cutting on the property forever in perpetuity. We feel that if we had a proposal, and we would have to go to the inland wetlands commission as well, it's not only your commission for a CAM approval, but there may be opportunity to expand in that area and handle, and, and do it responsibly and handle it properly. So I would just offer that if you do so choose to adopt, there, a stipulation of that DEP letter for that consideration, that we wouldn't have that door closed and we may be able to come in front of you for a, for review if we ever want to change this plan or further encroach.
But isn't that, isn't that all wetlands behind that? That's a pretty, that's, I don't, I don't see how you could.
The area, so it's a little bit difficult to see on this project-
You have a chart.
But this blue line is the tidal wetland. And then it departs here. I should have did a different color, but this line here is the inland wetland. There's a little pocket of inland freshwater wetland here.
Mm-hmm.
And then this is all the tidally influenced, influenced wetland. We can't touch any of this. If you go and fill that, you need an Army Corps permit for anything over 5,000 square feet, I believe. But we, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be interested, and especially near this building, there's no more room to encroach.
Right, right, right.
So insofar as this being the buffer, yeah, we're not going to touch that.
Right.
But if you get up into this area that's further away, I didn't want it to be interpreted that this entire area that's still remaining vegetated is the buffer and can't be touched ever again. I don't think that's a fair-
I don't think they've defined it that way.
Okay.
So I, I don't think it's like anyone would ever interpret that letter as meaning, since it isn't defined, that it's like a conservation easement. So-
To that point, there is a conservation easement.
I know there is.
But, but it, it only extends up to, I believe, the wetland area.
Correct.
There's a line here.
They say between the developed site and the tidal wetland boundary.
Yes. Yeah, it's somewhere in this, this area.
So-
And that will show up on the survey, which we will file before final plan. I know that was one of the comments. We do have an A2 survey, it's just-
So this would be like the chart from the, your earlier submittal?
Yep. So if that's not the interpretation, if it could be clarified as such in the meeting minutes, that's fine. We just don't want to be-
I'm looking at their letter and I don't think they, I don't think they define the vegetated buffer significantly enough. So, so, you know, as, as you say, the wetlands and the freshwater, the tidal wetlands and the freshwater wetlands lines define those areas of sensitivity. They do not define the vegetated buffer. I just say you should exercise caution wherever you trim it.
Dead. Latin clear, yep. We concur with that.
And I would seek blessing, but I, I don't have any objection if the letter isn't incorporated into the approval, quite frankly. I think it's important that it's in the file because they've, they've, you know, rendered really an approval of the application.
And if, if the understanding is that, that, that the buffer is not, you know, the entirety of the property that's vegetated, then we have no issue with inclusion of that letter as a stipulation.
I, I don't know how you could, I don't know how you could ever insinuate that. I don't know how they could ever insinuate it.
Understood. Thank you.
Can we have public comment? Are you wrapped up or you need-
I think that is it, unless anyone else has any questions. I think we could wrap. Mr. Sacaroli is here. If there's any questions for him, he's the property owner, and Mr. Gudon is here. If there's any further questions that I can't answer regarding the restaurant.
Okay.
What, what color is it going to be?
The building?
Yeah.
Basically, the colors that you saw, I think, it's, I believe it's a beige.
Beige with blue?
Tam color.
Okay, all right.
The, the roof isn't really blue. It's, it's whatever the-
This is the tidal wetland.
Whatever it is.
It's an asphalt shingle. That was, it's a little bit of an embellishment. It's beautiful rendering, but it's not really a blue tint to it. It's more of a gray or an asphalt shingle.
Okay. I didn't know if it was the same color as the building that's there, you know?
We'll see.
It's going to pretty much be the same, I believe, until they re-roof. I don't think that is necessary.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any comments from the public? No one has signed up on the sign-up sheet, so I'm assuming that vast audience is okay out there. Staff.
So we sent this application to various departments and organizations for comments. The town engineer had earlier comments, most of which were addressed with the revised plans. There's a few outstanding and so we have a stipulation of approval that the final plans meet his review. Our floodplain management consultant had comments on this early on in which she wanted to see more detail on the new building, which was redesigned by the architect to meet the flood hazard requirements. And I think it was mentioned that the existing restaurant building they're proposing will not be a substantial improvement. They'll keep the costs down to do that and they'll have to be verified by the building Police commission saw no issues with public safety. We talked about WPCA. Here we get the comments from DEP that we mentioned earlier. So the commission decisions here would be a decision about the waivers requested, a decision about the coastal area management application, and a decision about the special use permit application. And I'll go over the recommended stipulations because I like to do that while a hearing's open, in case the applicants have any comments about it. But those, the ones listed in the staff report are, number one, the town's maximum seating notice must be posted in a conspicuous location inside the restaurant. Number two, the applicant will apply to the building official through the building permit process for determination of substantial improvement for the existing building. If the proposed improvements are found to be a substantial improvement, the entire structure must comply with current applicable flood hazard requirements and building modifications will be subject to commission review. Number three, no live music or amplified music above normal dining volume is permitted indoors or outdoors as part of this application. Number four, final plans shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer. Number five, final plans shall be recorded in the town's land evidence records after commission signature. Number six is the standard language about an erosion-sedimentation control bond. Number seven, any improvements in the road right-of-way shall require an encroachment permit from the Stonington Department of Public Works. Number eight, proposed signage shall comply with requirements for illumination and motion in section 712.3. Number nine, all new building-
I think we said that it, they cannot be lit.
Yeah, let's see. So we'll change that to all new building or sight lighting. What we said before was shall be downward-facing external illumination.
Correct.
Yeah.
Number nine, all new building or sight lighting shall be full cutoff. New light poles should be a maximum of 20% high from grade to the light source per section 2.16, .2, .6. Number 10, prior to approval of a zoning permit, an A2 survey shall be provided verifying the location of property lines and the building's conformance with building setbacks. And now we're into the ones that we have sort of come up with tonight. Number 11 would be, new building may include office, personal services, retail restaurant, or financial services uses without additional commission approval. And that is not including daycare.
Yeah.
Number 12, accessory storage shall be added to the retail building as per the site plans and parking calculations. Number 13, landscaped island shall be added to the parking lot between buildings. And I think that was it for the ones that we talked about.
I agree. A total of 12 stipulations.
Oh, 13.
Could you just repeat number 12, Keith? Just want to make sure.
Accessory storage shall be added to the retail building as per the site plans and parking calculations.
Great, thank you. And just so you all know, Mr. Spring, Mr. Springsteele, the architect, is here. If you have any questions, further questions on the building that I couldn't answer.
Okay. Are there, are there further questions from the commission for the architect?
No. I do have one question. I just, it's, how, how tall are the lights going to be in the parking lot?
I know this is specific, but I've, I've noticed lately some differences in the height of lights around the town of Stonington in parking lots and the difference it makes in the illumination outward. And I know you, you have your candle, your candle sketch there, but what are you calculating it as? Because Keith said in his stipulation, 20 feet?
Yeah, and that's a, that's a regulation per zoning.
Right.
For, for parking lot light poles, anyway.
Right. So what are you thinking it's going to, what would it be designed it as?
20 feet. That's what they're, as they're designed. If we had to go to less, if you make them any shorter, you might have to increase the frequency of them. So it's a trade-off.
You've got poles everywhere.
Or you have to adjust the lights to be brighter and then really want a softer light. I think, our lighting consultant usually tries to balance all that, but I've seen pretty much nothing less than 15 feet when they really want to shorten them up, but as Mr. Sheehan has indicated, then you got a sea of a lot of poles.
Okay, thank you. I was just, I was curious. I, I have a, an academic interest in that and so I've, I've got to do a little bit more research. I think we need to change that regulation, actually.
Also, any questions? Keith, you're all done with your input?
Yeah.
Do you hear a motion to close the hearing?
Sub lower, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Charles. Chuck. And Ryan, your second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I have no.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
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 So what do we start with first? Waivers?
Let's do, yeah, sure.
They're listed on page 29 of 41.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move the waiver request for this application. I believe there's 10 waivers. They're stipulated on page 29 of 41 of Keith's memorandum and I move approval of the waivers that's requested.
Second.
Ryan has a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the coastal, coastal area management application. And Keith, should this include all the recommended stipulations as are recommended for the special use?
Yeah, we might as well do them for, for both, just to cover it.
So you can move those two in concert with one another?
Or the, the motion for all?
The stipulation, okay. So, and the, the motion is made subject to the, what's it, 13?
13.
Yeah.
13 recommended stipulations as set forth by Keith during the public hearing.
Seconded.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. So I'm, this is the CAM and the special use permit combined?
I think we're doing them separately, aren't we?
Yeah, just doing coastal with 13 and then the subject with 13.
The stipulations are going to 13, okay. So this is the CAM with 13 stipulations?
Correct.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the special use permit application, subject to the same 13 recommended stipulations that Keith read during the public hearing.
Seconded.
Thank you, Ryan, for seconding. Discussion?
So I just have a kind of question for the committee. Would the planning and zoning committee, or Keith, go to the public works and suggest, say, we've just approved this, you know, development of this area, the influx of private money to improve it, et cetera? We'd like this to be considered for the town of Stonington to do something with that curbside.
How does that work, Keith? Is there a-
Well, it's something I can, I can mention.
Two years and three budgets later?
Yeah, I don't know, you know, how much of a big budget issue that would be.
I mean, is it a formal request from this commission to the public works? Is that how, or is it from you, the planning department? I don't know, it's a-
I don't think that would be a part of the approval action. I think it'd probably be a good, it's a good suggestion and it would be from the chairman to the, to the staff, to like the first select person, requesting that the town take a look at this area. We're talking about the Tree Belt area?
Yeah, because I, again, I think that, you know-
To work in concert with the developed-
Exactly. They're investing private money and they're going to work with their across-the-street neighbors and let's kind of have a collaboration, have the town- neighbors, and let's kind of have a collaboration, have the town put some thought into it as well.
I'd be glad to help push that along.
Okay, great.
But it's not part of this?
No, it's not part of the application. I just wondered.
All those in favor of the-
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So moved. Thank you, Sergio.
Thank you. Appreciate your attention this evening and your comments on consideration for the, the town to participate.
It's a big improvement down there, thank you.
It's a great thing.
Thank you, John, George.
Be a good collaboration overall, given the amount of activity down there.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. So, do we have anything else to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
What was that, Ryan?
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Seconded by Fred. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So moved. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, sir.